So here we go. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the March 11, 2021, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole. Our first item of business this evening is a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole meeting of February 11, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners? Mr. Bowman, Commissioner Bowman.
No.
Okay. Uh, I like the minutes. I think they are the usual type of minutes that I've seen over my many years of minutes reading. I think they succinctly capture what various people say in these meetings, and I don't see any need to amend the way that we do the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Any other comments about the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, and so we will move now to public comments on agenda items. All right, we have one resident, her hand raised. If you could move her in, thank you.
Okay, once again, to continue this, that-
We're not going to continue. This is comment on agenda items only.
For not to tell me what I can and can't say in my comments.
I can tell you that your comments need to be focused on the agenda items that are before the committee of the whole, and if they're not, then your your comment period will be truncated.
Do you understand that the law, the Pennsylvania law that you actually took an oath to follow allows a resident to interrupt the meeting at any time for a perceived violation of speaking rights?
So, Ms. Lehman, I would urge you to get to your comments about the agenda items, or your microphone will be turned off.
Of speaking rights you have removed, apparently, according to policy. This is this is not my comments on the-
So you you should get to your comments now, or your ability to get to them will be taken away.
Are you not going to allow the the speech-
I'm going to allow you to do what this meeting provides you per our policy, which is to speak for up to five minutes on the agenda items. If you choose to do anything other than that, your your ability to speak will be removed.
I'm asking you, are you denying that the Sunshine Law requires you to allow-
I'm not, uh, right now, Ms. Lehman, we are focused on the agenda items before the board. If you choose to comment on those, you may do so. Otherwise, your microphone will be turned off.
What you're doing is in-
Please decide now, Ms. Lehman. Do you have comments on the agenda items? Because if you do, they will be heard. If you do not, you will be cut off.
I certainly do, so-
So get to them now, because you've wasted a minute of your five-minute period on this on on this.
No, I have not. I have been speaking on Sunshine Law.
You now have three minutes and forty-eight seconds to get to your comments about the agenda items.
All right, well, you'll have to give me a second to get my agenda back up.
I do not. Um, you should have been prepared to speak to those.
Well, then, put the full agenda up, please. Okay, I either have to get my agenda back up. It just disappeared.
You're now at three minutes and thirty seconds.
You do understand that we have an agenda in the meeting, and that my agenda just disappeared. We're having technical difficulties, and you give everyone else pause to to fix those. I'm trying-
I don't give anybody anything. You have up to five minutes at this meeting to speak to the agenda. You've now wasted almost a full two minutes on things not related to-
You're in violation of the law. I am looking for, here's the agenda in minutes. Hold on, I'll have it in one second here.
And hold on as the clock ticks.
Yes, okay, and the other agenda has already been moved. The meeting's not even done, and the the BOC agenda has already been moved. It's coming up right now. Okay, so here we go. All right. All right, so, uh, so the Rothley Avenue issue, which is I, letter I, okay, is one of the ones that absolutely no notice has been given for, not even for the zoning hearing board, which is 100% required by law, but Abington always had notification that they gave, and this board needs to understand that you are step by step taking away every right that citizens had in this township, including when the people come to comment on this. Are you telling me that the policy has changed, that if they're at a committee meeting, they are no longer allowed to address the the committee chair? Do we change that too? Because when you brought the changes to the speaking rights, you said you were expanding speaking rights.
You are drifting away from the comments about the agenda items once again.
When these people come to speak on this issue, what are their rights going to be? This is let letter I. Rothley Avenue, Kevin McGuire and James J. McGuire, who did not notify the neighbors at all that this was that these meetings were coming up. They went to the planning commission. Nobody knew they were there. Okay, nobody knew what nobody knows where to find the documents, because you you hide them in all the various different meetings, and they don't know how to find them. So are you going to fix that for the people that need that fixed, or are you going to leave it broken? That's my question.
Your question is noted.
Okay, are we going to get answers to questions? Because that's another question I have, is that how can we operate without getting any answers to questions? How dare you run our township that way? How dare you?
You have forty-five seconds, Ms. Lehman.
Yes, okay, so let me look at the rest here. Molly Court, the dedication of Molly Court. You understand that there's water issues over there, right? Okay, I just I just want you to understand that, you know, we're dedicating the road now, and the township is going to take care of those issues, and I think we have unresolved water issues over there that seem to be going to be handed over to the township, and I do not think that they should be handed over to the township if that's the case. So, again, this is another thing where you have taken away all our speaking rights. We can't talk on these issues succinctly without first hearing the discussion of what it is, what the background on these issues is, and what you're planning to do. That's when our comments should come.
You've made your perspective known, Ms. Lehman. Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
Legal running of this all.
We will not other. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Hearing none, we will move into, we have no unfinished business this evening. We will move to new business, agenda item A, and this is to consider approving an extension for the agreements. I'm not going to read the numbers. You can see them there. Buy and between the Department of Community and Economic Development for the multimodal transportation fund grant, which supports the Old York Road, Susquehanna Road project until June 30th, 2022. Manager Manfredi, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. As you know, we have had the DCD and the multimodal grants for the Old York Susquehanna project. Because of the pandemic, we have not taken any steps necessary to move forward with that project in any way with the engineering, the design, the demolition, but it is necessary to seek an extension, because we will not be able to meet the current June 30th deadline. So this request will be submitted to the state asking for an additional year to be able to continue to proceed when the pandemic ends.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. I will open this up to comments or questions from my colleagues. President Spiegelman?
Uh, thank you, Vice President Hecker. Sorry, I was gonna hit the raise hand button, but I lost it. Um, uh, I certainly, obviously, there are other questions and comments from folks, but having having worked on this this project for a long time, I hope that everyone will consider approving this extension and moving this item directly to the consent agenda. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Let me see, I have to shift over. Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. Just very, very small detail, but the letter requesting the extension, I just want to note, has May 12, 2020 as the date. We may need to update that before formally submitting that.
Before submitting, we, yeah, I noticed that as well, sir. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman.
Yes, big time. Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, so there's been a recommendation by President Spiegelman to move this forward to next month's consent agenda. Do we want to turn that into a motion?
If I may, Vice President Hecker, I I move that we that we move the approval of this extension to next month's consent agenda. And I-
Second.
Okay, there's there's been a motion and a second, and then, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to next month's consent agenda. Thank you. Item B, this is for us to consider and discuss a resolution adopting an extension to the existing intergovernmental agreement for the continued participation in the Wissahickin Clean Water Partnership for 2021, and I'll again turn to Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. I'm actually, because he is on the board with this and has greater detail, I could comment, but I think it's more appropriate if Mr. Wrigley addresses this.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and Manager. Um, this is really a continuation of the work that actually I've been doing and several other people at township have been doing, along with all the municipalities involved with the Wissahickin Creek watershed area, probably for five years now. We've been working on this. The previous agreements lasted about two years. This is just a renewal, same type of agreement that we've used in the past. The agreement's a little bit shorter because we're further along, and the this whole work is to prepare a water quality improvement plan. That's going to be submitted to DEP and EPA, which it has been submitted. We're working on revising the agreement or the the plan based on the comments we received from DEP. Hopefully, in the next five, six months, we'll have everything answered for what DEP and EPA is looking for, and hopefully by the third or fourth quarter, we'll have a an approved plan that we can bring to you and the rest of the municipalities for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wrigley. Are there comments or questions from my colleagues? Hearing no questions, do I have a motion to move this forward to next month's Board of Commissioners meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Do we have any opposed? Thank you. This this matter will move forward to next month's board meeting. Item C is to ratify the extension of the agreement for the recycling services with JP Mascaro and Sons dated October 22, 2015, for an additional period of six months with certain price changes for certain services and concurrently approved Resolution Number 20-048, as approved by other Montgomery County participating municipalities. Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you know, we have a current existing agreement for recycling with JP Mascaro through the consortium. The consortium has been negotiating for some time, and we talked about having a study done. However, with the pandemic, this has been extended for two six-month periods, and they need more time, so they've asked for another six-month period. And I do not know if Mr. Maxwell is here, but I know Mr. Jones is here if he'd want to expand upon that.
Certainly.
Yes, currently, Mr. Maxwell and Lisa Urquhart are working with a committee made up of representatives from the other municipalities. They are working with a consultant, and there is studies that are underway right now, and before the end of the six-month period, we hope to have a recommendation for the board moving forward with the the next bid on this recycling.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Behe.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. Mr. Jones or Mr. Manfredi, is this issue separate from the potential lease of the facility on Fitzpatrick Town Road?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other comments or questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, can we get a motion to move this forward to next month's Board of Commissioners meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioners Oppone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any opposed? Thank you. Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the next month's board meeting. Now on to item D. This is for us to consider and discuss a resolution recognizing the month of April 2021 as Pennsylvania Safe Digging Month, and I will again turn to Manager Manfredi.
As you know, one call and safe digging, there's oftentimes a lot of damage to property and injury to persons, and there is an annual campaign just to do it what this resolution says, and we are asked to help in that campaign and make people aware of the importance of safe digging, and that is the sole purpose of this. It's a it's a public awareness program.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Are there questions from my colleagues? Hearing none.
I want, uh, let me, um, is this in conjunction with the PA one call? Yes, sir. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Oppone. Any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to move this forward to the April Board of Commissioners meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioners Oppone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. This will move forward to the April Board of Commissioners meeting. Item E, this is for us to consider and discuss authorizing advertisement for an ordinance accepting the dedication of Molly Court Roadway right of way, and for this, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. I've had some recent conversations with Township Manager on this. It seems like there there may be one or two things that we're still looking to looking into, but Manager Manfredi, I'll throw it over to you and and have us redirect to to anybody else that is on the call that may be able to speak to this, but I want to assure the board and the public that we feel comfortable that we're okay moving forward doing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Yes, this is an ordinance accepting the dedication of Molly Court, the roadway. The the issues that have been expressed by some, including residents and neighbors on on Molly Court and in other areas of the township actually, are related to the stormwater and drainage. The road is a separate issue, and I think it'd be most appropriate to have the the township engineer Cal Hassan address that. Cal, if you would, please address the road dedication and the relationship to the stormwater issues that some may be be maybe enduring, and how those stormwater matters are addressed through the development documents, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. Commissioners, good evening. I I had a chance to take a look at this development in the past few days, and I know there are residents who had expressed many concerns pertaining to stormwater, mainly existing stormwater concerns, that I I believe possibly as part of this development will be addressed, because the project as being proposed, the intent of it is to address the stormwater and maintain everything within the site and and do not permit the water runoff from the site on neighboring properties. And as part of this project, there is an underground stormwater facility that is being proposed within the roadway. At this time, I, my opinion, I do not believe the township should move forward with accepting the dedication of this road. There are several items that will need to be discussed and evaluated, especially with a stormwater facility that is in the road. My opinion is that a stormwater facility such as this should be owned and maintained by some kind of a homeowners association or some other mechanism besides the township. You do not want to get involved into a situation where if you accept the road and then future stormwater issues arise or surface from this project, then the township is on the hook for it as you move forward. So my recommendation is not to move forward with accepting the Molly Court roadway right of way dedication at this time. I'll answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you, sir.
If I-
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman.
Management Manfredi.
Yeah, please, Manager Manfredi.
Miss, yeah, I I think I may have, when I referenced the other development that people are concerned with, I think Mr. Hassan talked about that. There is, there are residents from another section of the township where we will be considering, and that's a matter of, that's a matter of, frankly, discussions with council on both parties of township, as well as the the property owner over at Minell Road, and he's referring to that. Those residents were referencing Molly Court and Molly Court's stormwater. So I think that Mr. Hassan's comments were relative to the problems on Minell, that those residents were referring back to Molly. The issue on Molly, there's also residents who are concerned about stormwater, which is being referenced by the other residents. I think what I was asking Mr. Hassan to to address was the fact that the stormwater requirements of the Molly Road subdivision, where their neighbors have concerns, will be addressed through the various approvals that were granted through the development process, and that the Molly Court dedication of the roadway is, and what's on your agenda this evening, is limited to to the road. What we were trying to address is your concerns, because as you always are, Mr. Rothman, in being responsive to constituents' requests, there have been a number of people who've reached out to you, and you've reached out to me to make sure we address those stormwater requests, Molly. So that's what we're doing, and I don't know if Mr. Hassan may not have actually finished his review on that stormwater matter, because as you know, he is still onboarding and picking up some things that were left behind. But I just want to make sure everyone understands to make that clear. He referenced comments made about Molly by the other development, and that other development, which his recommendation is related to, not Molly Court. That helps.
Okay, Mr. Hassan, are you are you able to confirm that what Manager Manfredi just said is that you that you you're in agreement? We don't want to move forward here with something that we don't feel comfortable with. My understanding is is consistent with Manager Manfredi, but I'd love for us to make sure we're on the same page.
I'm actually, yes, my apologies. I am actually in the same understanding. I I was not aware of this project too long ago. I am 100% on the same page with with you and Manager Manfredi on this project, yes.
That's wonderful, and I thank you. And Rich, if there's any other comments on this, please, please share them with the board, but my my concerns, I don't have concerns moving forward with this dynamic as addressed in item E.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Brodsky.
So, hold on. Thank you, Vice President Hecker. I don't really want to go into a lot of comment on this, because the issue concerning Mono Road is in litigation, and I really don't want to comment one way or the other, but I do believe that there is a potential for tie-over between Molly Court and Mono Road. And having said that, I'd be a bit uncomfortable moving forward until I have a chance to clarify certain things that would be of concern to my constituents, and also, I think, as I understand the engineer's concerns, he does not want to move forward this at this point in time until other things are clarified. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
No.
No, it's, uh, the the project that I was referring to was a was a different project, and and my apologies, because there's another project that has stormwater issues on it.
That's Mono Road.
Correct. Correct, and and that road, there's currently concerns that were raised by neighboring residents. It was not for Molly Road, no.
Is the, is what's proposed at Molly Court the same as what's proposed at Mono Road?
The for Molly Road, the difference between them is there is no stormwater facility within Molly Road. Mono Road is different. There's a pretty significant stormwater facility, underground facility within the road itself.
I don't want to set bad precedent by approving Molly Road when the same exact issue exists at Mono Road. So are you telling me there are different issues concerning stormwater management?
That is correct.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Commissioner Schreiber.
Am I correct that this isn't an actual approval? We're voting on moving this forward to either, I guess, the regular Commissioners' meeting or to some other committee? We're not actually approving this this evening, so there would be time, if there's any questions, to try to get them answered?
That is correct, Commissioner Schreiber. We actually, at this at this working meeting, we're not actually approving anything. We're just moving things to a certain next stop on their way to approval or not.
Okay, so we're just moving it forward.
Commissioner Hecker, I just want to be clear. I'm so, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schreiber.
No, I just want, I'm just going over the clarification.
I I did, and it's and it's a good point, Commissioner. This item on this agenda is specific to the dedication of the road, period.
Understood.
This would get moved to the, if if you so choose, for vote on the road dedication next month. The issues that came about that Commissioner Rothman was related to was there was concern by residents that they did not think that the road was separate from the stormwater. So all we were trying to point out is that the road is separate, the stormwater issues are being looked at separately. Mr. Hassan really just began looking at that, which is why he referenced the other project. So I think, very simply put, the issue in front of you is a simple one. It's the dedication of of the street at Molly Court and nothing more. All of the others are tangential to and concerns of constituents as it relates to that development.
Thank you, man.
And we certainly can have any of those addressed prior to to the regular business meeting next month.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Behe.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. I I actually think the issue is simpler still, because the next act is to vote on an advertising ordinance. So no ordinance actually regarding dedication would come for this board until May at the earliest. So we're looking at like two months before this is actually ripe for decision. So just to make clear, we are very preliminary here. That's all.
Yep, thank you. That's an important point. Commissioner Brodsky?
I just want to make clear for for the record that I do not, I understand everybody's simplifying the issue, but I also want to make sure that we're not setting precedent, which would impact a different issue in my specific board, and I do not want that to be the case. So with that proviso and that understanding, please note that I do not want to set precedent where the board will be bound by what we've done here, and then that goes over to another project, which the engineer indicated may be different, but I want to make sure that's crystal clear on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues? All right, well, Commissioner Rothman.
Commissioner Hecker?
Yes.
I I think Commissioner Myers tried to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Myers.
I'm sorry, I'm, I have not learned how to raise my hand, so.
Well, just speak out. If I'm, I don't want to miss your comments.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I I understand the process here and the steps and, but I think it would really behoove us to have have this at the next committee meeting for discussion, because I don't think that any of us, except for Commissioner Rothman, even really know where Molly Court is, and we want to be sure that we're, we understand what we're voting for. We have not been sending things to committee, and I think in some cases that's a mistake. Really logical one, as one other on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Hecker, if I may interrupt for one moment?
Certainly.
I wouldn't, just for purposes, and I think Commissioner Rothman would agree with me, Molly Court is pretty much on the border of Ward Two and Ward Three. It's just right on the edge of either one of those wards, and I would encourage every member of the board to, if you have the time and the desire, to get in your car and kind of drive around and take a look at the two specific projects in in contemplation here, one being Molly Court and the other one being the Mono Road, but we can discuss that at a future time. But I would encourage members of the board to actually, or feel free to ask Commissioner Rothman questions, and feel free to ask me any questions, because they, there is crossover that is here. So we can simplify it, or we go. But I want to thank in advance everybody for listening to that and for considering, and thank you for, if you do decide to get in your car, I thank you for that. And Commissioner, Vice President Hecker, thank you for allowing me to speak. I thank you for that. And Commissioner, Vice President Hacker, thank you for allowing me to speak after Commissioner Myers. And thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Manager Man Freddie, a question for you. If this were to be referred back to committee, uh, where do road dedications actually go?
This would probably be public works because it's, it could, it could go to land use as well. But this isn't a develop, this development, uh, isn't in process. This is dedication of the road.
Okay.
So this is a, a frankly, a perfunctory step. Because it was planned to be dedicated. The, and what I was trying to drive home is the concerns that have been expressed about stormwater aren't necessarily tied to the road. That's what we recently asked, uh, Mr. Hassan to look at. And I cannot believe that as recent as the comments have come in, that he's even had a chance to do the analysis to see if the road dedication would be, uh, would be any impact. I, I can't imagine if the designs would not work, but I don't want to say that because I don't have the plan in front of me. As to whether it goes to committee, uh, or to you next month, um, to the, to the regular business meeting. I, I think if this were the only item going to that committee, was certainly, you can certainly do that, but I think it would be a rather simple matter. So whichever you prefer to do.
Well, as this is in the Commissioner Rothman's ward, I'd be interested in his perspective on where, where he'd like to see this go.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with, uh, I have no problem ever with us as a board taking a look into something that folks have concern with. I don't think that this is something where we're going to end up needing much discussion. But if we get, uh, a heads up on, um, you know, just, I, I think tonight we had a little that, that there's just some miscommunication there, um, that was clarified. But i- if we want to just, you know, lay it out a little better, uh, over the next, uh, little bit of time, we'll make sure that we're all right. It's no problem with me to move it to committee.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Bowman, I believe your hand was up as well.
Yeah, i- if that's the case, and, and we did clarify the miscommunication, then, and I'd be still in favor of moving it to the board and, and not going to the committee. That's kind of why we have the committee, the whole. The idea on Molly Court was always for the road to be dedicated and we had priorly approved that project. So, you know, I don't.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman.
Uh, Commissioner Hacker, I, I mean, I, I agree with, with, uh, Commissioner Bowman, but if there's any, you know, actual concern, um, you know, then, then fine. I mean, I, I'm not going to take a strong point, uh, against the folks that want to move it to committee either. Uh, I, look, if we have to vote on what we're going to do next, then I'll, I'll make a vote. But my point is, is that I, I don't want to stand in the way of, of any sort of collaboration.
Well, we, we will need a motion to do something one way or the other. I, I also understand Commissioner Thompson wants to make a comment.
Thanks, Vice President Hacker. I, I just wanted to kind of echo, um, Commissioner Bowman's comment. You know, the, the motion ahead of us tonight is really one of, you know, to advertise. And I do think if we want to go to committee, I think that's, that's fine, but I don't know that, that's what's on the agenda for this evening. The motion really is to advertise for the Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, if we need a committee meeting, we can do that, but I don't know that, that's what we're talking about right now.
Now, that's a fair point. And, and also, I mean, Commissioner Vahie had made the same point earlier that if we, if we vote to move this forward tonight to advertise an ordinance, that would occur in April. And we wouldn't be actually considering this agenda item until the May Board of Commissioners meetings. And so I, I guess I would ask Commissioner Myers, knowing that, would that satisfy your concern about having sufficient time to get up to speed and feel comfortable with what we would be voting on in May?
I, I, I mentioned this only because I'm going to be asking for the same thing for the agenda item I, the fourteen oh five Rothley Road. And I, I keep hearing that there are residents with concerns. Well, whether they should have them or not, whether they're justified or not. But I, I feel that in committee, it's much easier to really speak on the individual item and really help people to understand exactly what it is. If it doesn't go to committee, that's fine. I don't care. Um, but, but I just, I think it is, and I think that we're getting away from the committee meetings. And they were always the truly working meetings. Uh, and also that more people feel comfortable, even with Zoom.
Oh, I think.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yeah, Commissioner, Manager Man Freddie.
Setting aside the, the Rothley item I, on this particular issue to, uh, Commissioner Vahie, Commissioner Bowman, and Commissioner Thompson's points. If this gets moved to the regular business meeting next month, we can certainly have an overview of the land development that was previously approved. So you could see how the road dedication is at that time when you, when you would approve, uh, the authorization of the advertisement. So if at that time, there still is not enough information, you can certainly then put it to committee to, to vet if what you see is not, is not sufficient on, on this matter, not Rothley is a separate discussion. So you do have, still have time because as they've pointed out, this is a motion to advertise. Not adopt.
Yep. Thank you, Manager Man Freddie. I see Mr. Hassan's hand is up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, if I may suggest, uh, if, if, if the, if the commissioners would like to move this forward, if you wish, uh, well, one condition or, or what contingent upon me taking a look at it, confirming everything back to Manager Man Freddie by Monday, just to assure you pertaining to any drainage issues and to speak on the right of way dedication, I'll be more than happy to do that. This way you have a comfort level of me providing you something in writing to my opinion on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Do we have other comments or questions? Uh, Commissioner Brodsky.
Thanks, thanks, Commissioner Hacker, Vice President Hacker. I just, I understand the simplicity of what people are saying. All we're doing is we're not voting on the substance of it. I understand they were not doing anything but advertising an ordinance, but this is just going to lead to further discussion. And I again encourage the members of the board, go talk to the residents in my neck of the woods and about the same project and the same type of dedication itself. Because once you move that along here, yes, you still have to vote on the substance of the ordinance. I get that. This is just a procedural step as opposed to substance. Understood. But you don't want to be in a position without further evaluation in setting potentially. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but the potential for bad precedent could happen. So there's no real prejudice to either, to really anybody in my view, to move this forward just for the advertising of the ordinance. So quite frankly, I would still stick with the fact that put this back to committee at this point in time. Go talk to my residents, go visit the sites, nothing better than a site visit. And we'll wait for the engineer's report and see what it has to say. So I would still stick with the fact that we need to hold this at committee till next month. My suggestion. Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? So at this point, the floor is open for a motion on how to proceed. Commissioner Bowman.
I'd make a motion to move this matter to the, uh, Board of Commissioners for act, for, you know, to advertise it and not send it to committee.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Just as a procedural question, we need to, do we, are we open to other motions or do we need to vote on this motion?
Well, there's a motion and a second. Unless someone offers an amendment to that motion with a second that you would consider, you would simply call the question on, on this motion.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Man Freddie.
I offer an amendment to the motion to keep it in committee. So the motion would be not to forward it to committee or not to forward to the whole board, but to instead keep it committee pending a further report.
That would, that would be a separate motion that would have to be acted upon if this motion failed. You're not, that, that's a complete different action. It's not, um, I'm not truly amending it.
I'm amending their motion to take the positive to the negative. So if you want a separate motion, I can make a separate motion as well. And no, no.
Well, I think you'd have to vote, you, you have to vote first on the motion that's on the floor. And if that motion fails, then another motion can be made.
But.
Respectfully, I think Commissioner Brodsky can offer an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. And as we have done here in the past, it's either accepted by the person who made the motion and the person who made the second. If it's not accepted by then, our, what we have done in the past, this hasn't been done for a while, is we, uh, we, we vote on the amendment. And if that fails, if that fails, um, then we vote on the original motion. Again, not strict, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, but nobody follows Robert's Rules of Order strictly. But that's, that's the way we have done it here in the past.
So to be procedurally correct, I actually did not hear a second to my amended motion. So quite frankly, I don't have the second at this point unless somebody wants to do that. Otherwise.
I didn't ask for a second because we, we got, we got into a procedural discussion. So if that's how we're going to proceed, uh, Commissioner Brodsky has put an amendment, uh, on the floor. Is there a second to Commissioner? There's a second. Okay. So we have, we have an amended motion, amendment to the original motion and a second. And so now we will vote on the amendment to the original motion. So all those in favor of, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It's essentially whether to accept the amendment and then you're going to vote on the full, then you're going to.
Got it. Thank you. All right. So.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
I don't accept the amendment.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner as well.
Just because there's clearly a, a lack of clarity in this moment. Sorry for the redundancy there. Can you restate exactly what's happening so that we don't have people voting on the wrong piece by mistake?
I'm happy to do so. Thank you. So there, originally there was a motion on the floor to move this forward, uh, to the April Board of Commissioners meeting where, uh, we would be debating whether to advertise this and vote on that in May. Commissioner Brodsky has made, has put forward an amendment for this to be referred back to committee in April. Uh, that, that amendment was seconded. And so what we will be voting on first is whether we are going to accept that amendment as a group. If that passes, then we'll have to take, I guess, another vote on the full motion. And if it is rejected, then we will revert back to take a vote on the original motion that was put forward. Does that help or, um, do we need further clarification?
No, I'm good. I just, I thought that we were, there was enough back and forth. I thought it would be helpful and make it very clear for everyone.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Carswell. Okay, so we are now going to take a vote on whether we are going to accept the amendment that has been put forward by Commissioner Brodsky. All those in favor of accepting the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
I didn't.
They want to have Biz Vile take a, uh.
I think we need a call vote.
Roll call.
Yes, okay. So Commissioner Thompson?
Opposed.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes, I'm in favor of my own amendment.
Commissioner Ball?
Opposed.
Commissioner Carswell?
Opposed.
Commissioner Rothman?
Opposed.
Mr. Vaughn?
Opposed.
Commissioner Myers?
Approved.
Mr. Zapata?
I approve of the amendment that, uh, Commissioner Brodsky put forth.
Commissioner Bowman?
Opposed.
Commissioner De Placido?
Yes.
Commissioner Wengard?
Opposed.
Commissioner Vahie?
Opposed.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Opposed.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Opposed.
Okay, so ten opposed to the motion failed.
Thank you. So now we will vote on the original motion, uh, that is to move this forward as written, uh, for the April Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, I suppose we should take a roll call for this as well.
Okay, this is the original motion.
This is the original motion, yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Opposed.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Sorry, but yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Opposed.
Commissioner Zapata?
Opposed.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner De Placido?
Opposed.
Commissioner Wengard?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes.
Okay, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven are in favor. The motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Vile. All right. Moving forward from that parliamentary procedure exercise, we will now move to item F on the agenda. Uh, this is for us to consider and discuss approving the land development application, LD twenty one zero one Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated at property address three fifteen Chelsea Avenue, Glen Side, to upgrade and expand the North Hills Pump Station to implement a PFAS treatment system. Uh, and I'll start with Manager Man Freddie.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. I, I do believe that, uh, the representatives from, from Aqua are here. And I know that this has been a project that Commissioner Thompson has been, uh, taking the lead on. So, uh, with, with respect to Commissioner Thompson, I'll, I'll turn it to him to introduce the Aqua people.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddie. Um, I guess there's no, I'm, I'm in support of this project. Um, flipping through the agenda this week, this is probably one of the most comprehensive land development applications that I've seen probably since being on the board. Um, and I wholeheartedly, uh, hope that everyone on the support tonight can, can agree to, to move it forward to next month's commissioner meeting for approval. And, uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Matt McDonald to walk us through what they plan on doing with Aqua PA out at Chelsea Avenue in North Hills.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. My name's Jason Marie and I'm an engineer with Matt McDonald. We appreciate the board commissioner's time and township manager man Freddie's time this evening. And I'll first turn it over to Brendan Kelly, who is the, uh, project manager for Aqua Pennsylvania to introduce the project.
Yeah, hi there. Um, I'm not sure you can see me or hear me, but.
We can.
Kelly, I'm an engineer and project manager with Aqua and our consultant engineer is Matt McDonald. Jason Marie is presenting tonight. Margie Gray is a principal engineer with us, for us. This is a, as said before, a PFAS treatment system at our North Hills well station. This well provides drinking water for twenty five hundred households in the area. It has been out of service, not in service since, uh, July twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, we did a twelve month pilot test of various treatment resins. Um, the pilot test was approved by Pennsylvania DEP. And in August, we got a DEP permit to, uh, construct this facility. So we're anxious to get going and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there comments or questions for members of the board?
Commissioner Hacker, can I just follow up?
Oh, certainly, of course.
Uh, you know, I don't, it wasn't elaborated on just now, but the reason we're doing this is to remove, uh, the PFAS chemical compounds that we believe are bleaching off of the Willow Grove Naval Air Station out of the drinking water, um, for North Hills. This was an issue that came to the forefront in, uh, twenty eighteen, um, when the federal government started kind of debating whether or not uh, the, the, how, um, limit that was set at the time of seventy five parts per trillion within the drinking water was actually acceptable or if it was something more arbitrary. And that led to a conversation of, you know, we can get this stuff out of the water. Here's the technology to do it, which we're seeing tonight, uh, as presented by Aqua and Matt McDonald. Um, and this is why this project needs to move forward. Twenty five hundred houses previously referenced are, deserve clean drinking water as does the rest of the township. And this is our opportunity to give it to them. So again, um, I say we support this project and move it forward to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Floor is open for questions or comments. Commissioner Ball.
Thanks, Vice President Hacker. Um, I enthusiastically support this too. And I do, I do want to sort of publicly acknowledge the great work of our colleague, Commissioner Thompson. It's been exemplary in your leadership here to make sure everybody's safe with, uh, uh, remittance of the PFAS chemicals is, uh, is, is wonderful and great to see. The, the image here brings up the, not a. It's just more of a clarification. I just wanted to know if we've talked publicly about with the residents, what the you can see how close and adjacent the houses are to the facility and. Sort of it would be great, Commissioner Thompson, if you could just talk a little bit about how enthusiastic that the neighbors are for this project to move forward. Less there be any questions about concern from the neighbors there.
Well, we've been talking about quick clean drinking water since 2018, and there has been a lot of enthusiasm for that to occur. And, you know, I mean, no offense to my friends at Matt McDonald, but the first. The first iteration that we saw of this was a considerably more industrial look. And we are greatly appreciative that that look over the last year or two has. Whirft into something that fits in much better with the residential character and quality of the neighborhood. So overall, the feedback has been positive. Everybody's looking forward to seeing this project move forward. Everybody's looking forward to clean drinking water. In fact, I I do believe that as it stands right now, what you're seeing on the screen is actually an improvement to the current site. It's pretty almost looks like a vacant lot with a with an aging brick structure on it. So this will actually enhance the neighborhood.
It's an attractive design. I would agree. Other comments or questions from members of the board? Yes, Commissioner Weingrad, then Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you. I'd like to see this facility active like as of yesterday. So I hold heartily agree that this should this should move forward to the full board of commissioners for a vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. President Spiegelman.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Commissioner Thompson is being generous when he says it with the original design was rather more industrial. This this looks so much better. And I know that that Aqua has been primarily from Commissioner Thompson, I know how how good. You know, Aqua and the designers have been to work with on this project. And I'm going to violate my own rule very quickly about jumping on the the praise train. But summer of 20 summer of 2020, summer of 2018, when the story broke about the 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 most recent sort of PFAS. Crises and the and the the numbers, I remember I was I was out of the country. And Commissioner Thompson, who was a relatively almost a brand new commissioner at the point, only commissioned for a few months. And who had in his ward, the the well that had these alarming numbers, the most alarming numbers in our immediate area. The way he jumped on this and has been working on this ever since was was phenomenal. I actually copied stuff from him for my newsletter while I was overseas. Because he he explained it and got on the case so quickly. So this is really the culmination of of years of work on his part and. It helps all of us because all this water is blended. So even, you know, North Hills well is a very small facility. But every bit helps reduce the total PFAS. So kudos to you, Commissioner Thompson. Now I'm getting off the praise train. Thank you.
Thank you. The train has stopped. Commissioner Rothman?
I agree with Speaker, the President Spiegelman said a lot there. So I don't know if I agree with everything, but. Commissioner Thompson deserves praise for this. There's others on the board that are also working on on this issue. And I encourage everybody to keep pushing for clean water. It's a major issue. This is a big step. All these things related to this are a big step. There's so many pieces to the whole puzzle. But I don't even think we that a lot of our residents know that there's problems with water around here. And I I appreciate everybody who who shares that the good work that's being done, but we got to keep pushing more and more and. I'm really proud to work with some of like Commissioner Thompson, who's just kicking butt on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Ball, your hand is still up. Do you wish to make another comment or? No, you wish to lower your hand. Thank you, sir. Seeing no other questions or comments, Commissioner Thompson, I'm going to turn to you to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. I make a motion to move this forward to the full board meeting.
That's a motion has been put forward and seconded by Commissioners upon. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hearing none, the item will move forward to the April board meeting. And we'll move on just as soon as we get the agenda back up. Thank you. So we are now on item G. This is for us to consider and discuss final release of escrow for Sussman Associates LP Kia dealership. In the amount of $58,430.17 required maintenance either by bond or cash in the amount of $4,682.83. And I will turn this over to Manager Man Freddie. Manager Man Freddie.
My apologies. In this particular in this particular case, Mr. Hassan will will take. The next matters really through through I and. Actually through J, but I would say that the Sussman Associates. Already have posted, I believe, a cash bond in the amount of 4682. But for the details, Mr. Hassan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Man Freddie. Again, hello, commissioners. So this this project is ready for your action tonight for final release. We have double checked on all the public improvements per the approved plan. And everything was done properly and to the satisfaction of the the approval that was granted by. By the board. As Manager Man Freddie had mentioned, every final release. That involves public improvements within the right of way is subject to a maintenance bond of 15% of the total cost of those improvements. And it appears that the applicant has submitted the. An escrow, some kind of a financial commitment in the amount of 4,682 and 83 cents. So what happens moving forward is we will document this and we will mark our calendar for the next 18 months. And then at the time, we will double check these improvements. In this case, it's mainly sidewalk and everything is okay. Then the. Maintenance bond will will lapse and and then the money will be returned to the to the applicant. I'll answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing no comments or questions, the floor is open for a motion. Commissioner Bowman. You're.
Tom, you're. Make a motion to move this to the full board for action next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. There has been a motion and a second, and so we will now take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the April Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now at item H, and this is for us to consider and discuss the release of escrow number one on Sussman Mazda dealership project. In the amount of $123,898.58, and I will turn this over to Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. Again, this project has submitted a request release for public improvements as part of the approved project. Again, we had visited the site, confirmed all the quantities that are being requested under this release, which is in the amount of 123,898.58. And we have confirmed that everything has been done under this release to the satisfaction of the approved plan, and it is. On your agenda for you for your action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Do we have comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And the motion would be to move this forward to the April Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Sapon?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you. So the motion has been put forward and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The matter will move forward. We are now at agenda item I, and this is to consider approving the proposed minor subdivision plan for property address 1405 Rothley Avenue. Kevin S. McGuire and James J. McGuire to create one new building lot for a single family dwelling use. And I will again turn this to Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Commissioner. This application was presented at the last. Planning Commission and they received unanimous recommendation to the board to move forward. Again, there are no improvements associated with this development. It's actually only a subdivision. They are proposing to subdivide one lot and keep an. There's an existing one, one of the lots, and the second one will remain vacant for potential future improvements, obviously, that is subject to permit. By by the by the township. And as part of this application, there are three waivers that are being requested, which are very straightforward waivers. One of them is waiver from the requirement to include tax parcel numbers and owner's names within 400 feet of the project. This is a very small project and there's already sufficient information on the plan. And we have no objection objection to this waiver. The second one is existing features. It's relatively similar to the first waiver. And we also believe there's sufficient information on the plan. And a waiver is warranted for this. And the last one is waiver from existing features on the plan. Again, we believe that this project provides ample information on it and therefore. A waiver from this section is also warranted. I'll answer any questions you have for me. Again, there are no improvements proposed as part of this project. It's just a simple subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. I will open the floor for comments or questions.
This is Gary Tilford from Charles Sheemakers.
Yes, Mr. Tilford. Yes, certainly.
Mr. Hassan, if you remember at the planning commission meeting, there was discussion about additional waivers. And I distributed a letter late this afternoon. One was for sidewalks and curbs, not. The sidewalk width not being per the standard of the township. Measured slightly less than three feet or four feet width. And the second was sidewalk location that the existing, these are existing sidewalks that are. Closer to the curb than the current township standard requires within six inches of the right away line.
Yes, Mr. Tilford, I did. I did receive that additional waiver request this afternoon, and you are correct. And I'll be more than happy to comment on on these two waivers if the board of commissioners would like me to.
Yes, please, Mr. Hassan.
Absolutely. So there are two additional waivers that are being requested as part of this. And again, after review of these waivers from my. From my standpoint, I believe that these waivers are warranted and and my recommendation is that the board considers these waivers. The first one is waiver from section 14627B1. This is for sidewalk and curbs. To permit existing nonconforming sidewalk to be less than four feet in width. The applicant is is trying to to keep this existing nonconforming condition the way it is. It is our opinion that the existing sidewalk measures at. Three feet and three quarters of an inch. So it is just shy of the four feet. It is the minimus and we have no issue with with the board considering this waiver. And second and last one, as Mr. Tilford had mentioned. The section 14627C, it talks and comments about sidewalk location. And this is to permit the existing nonconforming sidewalk to be located between the curve and right away. Line at more than six inches from the property line. In this case, the distance is anywhere between four feet, two inches and four. Four feet and seven inches. Again, we have no issues with these waivers and. Our recommendation is that the board, if you could or would consider these these waivers. I'll answer any questions you have for me.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hassan. I'm going to open the floor for comments or questions. Commissioner Ball.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. I just wanted to clarify that the. The width of the sidewalk would still be compliant and fully accessible for those with mobility issues. Is that the case?
Mr. Tilford?
Yes, that would be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Man Freddie? You're on mute.
It's your muted.
My apologies again. Just to be clear and for clarity, just want to ask a question. So the two additional waivers, Mr. Tilford, that you submitted today. The planning commission recommended. Approval conditioned upon Penoni's 21921 review letter. These items, I take it, were added after the planning commission and are not. In the 21921 review letter. Is that accurate?
No, that's not. The issues were raised by. Penoni Associates in their review letter and discussed at the planning commission meeting and we. We the discussions were that they would add these two waivers to the project.
So if I may clarify, I think Management Man Freddie is is correct. And Mr. Tilford, you're correct. The initial waiver request that was submitted to the township did not include these. As part of my review, I raised these two. Waivers that were discussed by the planning commission. You and the applicant had agreed and concurred with us, and therefore you added the. The additional waiver request which was submitted to the township. I think that's the. The the information. And again, we are in favor of these if the board would like to consider them.
And and also just wanted to for the commissioners to note that in your in your package, you also noticed that. The EAC and Shetree Commission, who are now a part of the regular review process, while they didn't make a. A recommendation, they did have suggestions and that's noted at the February 22, 2021. So I would want to suggest that. If if a motion to to approve would go forward, that it also reference the EAC memo of February 22, 2021.
And the applicant was okay with with that requirement from the environmental board.
Thank you. President Spiegelman.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hacker. Just following up on Commissioner Bowles' very on point question about sidewalk accessibility. As long term viewers know, in the past, we've had a lot of developers try to try to have sidewalk requirements waived entirely. Because there'd be sidewalks to nowhere or because for whatever reason. And I I have always been to, you know, to put it politely, a stickler about that, but. Just just to clarify, in this case, so that so that folks who are watching at home know, Mr. Tilford or Mr. Hassan. At its narrowest point, the existing sidewalk is only one quarter inch narrower than than the requirement, correct?
That's correct, yes. That's that is correct. And and if I may, I can also provide an additional component of clarification. This is existing nonconformant. Should the applicant in the future decide to move forward with any improvements and the sidewalk needs to be changed? Then it must comply with the with the regulations. This is not by any mean a a blanket waiver, say, okay, you never have to, but this is. Based on the current non nonconforming conditions.
Much appreciated. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Helps if I unmute. Commissioner Vaughn?
My question is if this is already an existing sidewalk, they're not changing the sidewalk at this moment. Why do we need a waiver for it if it's a sidewalk that has been in existence for time before the subdivision?
I can I can answer that if I if I may.
Certainly.
Any any property that is subject to to land development or subdivision in this case is subject to compliance with anything under the the subdivision land development ordinance. In this case, because it does not comply with the current minimum width of a sidewalk. The applicant will have to request relief from that if the board wishes to attempt them. Otherwise, they would have to replace them right now, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes, and and just to correct an earlier misconception that was put forth by a speaker. There was notice on this project and I was the attorney for Mrs. McGuire, who has passed away. And I do not represent these applicants, but they are represented by counsel, not here tonight. He represented them at the zoning hearing board and that original hearing was continued when neighbors did raise some issues that were addressed during the continuance period. There were two neighbors who had issues and they were addressed. The first neighbor had a concern about would her property value go down if a new house was added across the street? And the applicant's attorney retained a. realtor to send her a kind of a market evaluation if a new house went in, the impact on her house, a letter to that effect. And secondly, the next door neighbor also attended the zoning hearing board. It was discovered that he had a driveway which encroached on the McGuire property. The McGuires agreed to allow him to continue to occupy that section of driveway and to work around his his encroachment for this project. And so there was sufficient notice to neighbors, and and everything has been by the book. So any suggestion to the contrary is erroneous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. The drawings for this, are they are they posted anywhere for the public to see?
I guess I could answer that question. We post the agenda and all the supporting documents related to every agenda. So what you have in front of you would have been available to the public for this agenda item for the week or whatever it was that it was in advance. So short answer is yes, they're available to the public. What you see is available to the public.
And and Mr. Man Freddy, also also the waivers. If I were if I were just learning about this for the first time, would I be able to go on the agenda for the evening and get all of all of the information?
Yes, the only thing, and that's why I pointed it out for clarity, was these two additional ones. Everything else that you have in front of you is available to the public as part of the agenda that gets posted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions for members of the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
I move that we put this on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been seconded, so we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Thank you. The matter will move forward to the April Board meeting. And our final agenda item this evening, item J, is to consider and discuss approving the two additional waiver requests for JJHL Associates Limited after Faulkner Nissan. And again, I will turn this over to Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this this project was in front of the board of commissioners quite some time ago. And then when I came on board, I realized as I was going through the project and working with the applicant on recalling of the plans, I realized there are two items that really do qualify under a waiver request. We had this discussion with the with the applicant. And then they agreed with my determination. One of these items is related to the minimum size of of the of a stormwater pipe, and the second one is the minimum coverage on top of a pipe, specifically section one forty-six thirty-three C. This is pertaining to drainage location. The applicant is requesting a waiver to permit storm drainage pipes on a site to have a protected cover less than twenty-four inches. In this case, the project has eighteen inches. From an engineering standpoint, I do not have any reservation or concern with it because it is on private property. And the municipality or the township is not going to be responsible to upkeep and maintain. However, code is very clear, and such a a waiver from a conveyance system and stormer system would have to be requested from the board, and the applicant agreed, and therefore it is before you. And the second one is similar also, section one forty-six thirty-three D, there is a minimum size permitted. And the applicant, this is for stormpipe, the applicant is requesting a waiver to permit a waiver for providing HDPE, which is a high-density polyethylene and PVC storm drainage pipes to be less than fifteen inch in diameter. The and the applicant is proposing perforated twelve-inch HDPE and also a six-inch. In this case, again, from an engineering standpoint, I do not have any concerns or reservations and recommend that the board consider these two waivers. And this way, the project is clean, and there are no questions about it. All waivers have been properly requested and and maybe obtained if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you.
Are there comments or questions for my colleagues? Okay, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion.
This would be a motion to move it forward to the board meeting.
Right.
April. Yep, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded, so we will now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. So that this matter will move forward to the April Board of Commissioners meeting. And that brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening's meeting of the committee of the whole, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and thank you for your participation this evening, and have a good night.
Thank you for your time, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, commissioners. Welcome, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Bye. Stay safe, everybody. Night, all.